Okay, we're ready. We're back on with Agenda Number Nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speakers allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific agenda items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at one minute, so please do come forward. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10. Business items or possible action, any items from the 9:00 AM session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting, may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor, pro tem, please.
Madam Mayor, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn or stricken. Item number 35, a new compliance permit for a retail marijuana store for Essence Tropicana LLC, DBA Essence at 2307 South Las Vegas Boulevard. The action requested requests by staff to strike it, and that will be my motion.
Thank you. There is a motion, and please vote and please post. Thank you. The motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the October 16, 2019, regular city council meeting. Mayor, pro tem. May I have a motion on those minutes, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the October 16, 2019, city council meeting.
Thank you very much. This is motion on Agenda Item 11. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries also. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 12. Items 12 through 42, with the exception of 35, on a consent agenda considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, that may be enacted in one motion. Note a correction to Item 19, as it did not reflect a Ward and should have indicated Ward Five with Councilman Krier. Note also that the record should reflect my abstention to Items Number 21 through 25, because they pertain to medical marijuana-related businesses, and one of my sons is involved in that industry. I'll be voting on all other items. Are there any other items that the council wishes to bring forward?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Item 19 involves the Plaza Hotel and Casino. My wife works there, and I am going to disclose that, and our city attorney says I can vote, so I'll be voting on it.
Okay, thank you very much. So Mayor, pro tem. May I have a motion on the consented agenda, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items Number 12 through 42, with the exception of Item 35.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve. Please vote. And now, those motions carry right there. Okay, we are pulling forward Agenda Item 46 and 78. Is it 10? Yes. 78 and 79, because Councilman Krier has to leave for the airport, and we want to make sure that his agenda is the items he's present for. So we'll start with Agenda Item 46. Discussion for possible action regarding the review of conditions for a nonprofit club general on-sale license for American Legion Post 10, Inc., DBA American Legion Post 10, Inc., at 1905 8th Street. This is in Ward Five with Councilman Krier. And, good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the city council. For the record, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. Today, American Legion Post Number 10 is before you to request a review of conditions on their nonprofit club general on-sale liquor license. To give you a little bit of a background here, this location originally started operation as a VFW post way back in 1968. They held a nonprofit club liquor license until May of 2008. The VFW post lost its club charter when the VFW State Commander revoked the club charter due to public safety concerns and allegations of missing money. The club reopened as American Legion Post Number 10 on October 29, 2012, but without a liquor license. They appeared before City Council in 2013 and 2015 to reinstate that liquor license, but were denied. But American Legion Post appeared before you on March 6, 2019, and a temporary liquor license was granted with 20 conditions. Those 20 conditions that currently exist, I'd like to submit for the record, and that license is temporary until March 9 of 2020. But they are here before you today to request two conditions be amended. The first one is Condition Number One. The condition right now states that their hours of operation are from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and they'd like to have that changed to be extended until 11:59 PM at night, right before midnight. Condition Number Seven is another condition they'd also like to amend, and that changes the security guard requirement. Currently, the condition says that has to be a minimum of two security personnel, which are state-licensed, on the premises of the business when they are open. They would like to change that. What they would like to do is have a minimum of one security guard from opening to 7:00 PM in the evening, and a minimum of two security personnel on the business premises from 7:00 PM until closing. One would be monitoring the exterior parking lot, and one would be stationed at the entrance of the establishment. A third security guard would be added whenever the number of members and guests exceeds 100 persons. I'd like to also point out that Condition Number 18 requires that a city council review be required no later than one year after that temporary license was issued, prior to the issuance of a permanent license. So this meeting can serve for that purpose today, or if you'd like, and I would recommend if you do agree to the proposed amendments, that we do have that meeting sometime at the end of February or the first meeting in March. I should also state that the Department of Planning does not have any concerns about these proposed amendments. Mr. Grady Hayes, who is the Director of Operations of American Legion Post 10, is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Good morning to you and councilpeople, and to my personal councilperson, Councilman Krier. I want to thank the Planning Department and the city for all the assistance and help given us over this period of time. We accepted the conditions initially because we wanted to prove that we could meet those conditions. We're at a point now where we want to expand and expand some of the beautification things we had discussed before, and also some of the veteran programs that are available to be developed by utilizing some of the revenue that we're not able to generate now because of some of the restrictions. So that's just the conditions that we're asking for now. If we can relieve those restrictions, we can fulfill some of the promises we made to the city in March.
Okay, thank you very much, and we're just really delighted that things are going so well, because I know it was a long, hard road to get where we are today, and certainly took the diligence and caring of all of you and your members to get us here, so thank you. So any questions, comments first? Councilwoman Diaz, anything? Mayor, pro tem? Okay, before everybody says "no," but I say "yes." If I could ask Councilman Krier on the -- to take them by parts, because I'm fine with the first comment that Ms. McElhone brought up, which was, the very first was, if you'd repeat it, so I make sure you're saying what I am totally in favor of.
Madam Mayor, that is to change their closing hours from 10:00 PM in the evening to 11:59 PM, one minute before midnight.
Okay. I am very much, and this is just suggestions from me, Councilman, and I absolutely regard your assessment as the final that I will follow. I'm very much in favor of moving that from 10 to 11:59. That one, and I would hope that depending upon how you take it, whether we do it all together, because it depends on what you say, or take them individually. The second piece is, safety is first, always, in everything we do. Safety, safety, safety. And I think many people get out of work and would like to avail themselves as the opportunity to be at the Legion, but after four o'clock, and so I would like to recommend that we have the strongest security piece go not from, where is it now, or what they're requesting?
Madam Mayor, they're requesting the change happen at 7:00 PM, so one security guard until 7:00 PM in the evening, and then two.
Okay, so my recommendation would be 4:00 PM, and so we have two security guards then, and that the review be again in a year, but I'm sure if anything untoward happens, you would be back to us anyway, so.
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So that's really my suggestion, knowing, too, it gets dark now about 4:15, 4:30. You may look at it again once we're into the daylight savings, but I'm just always safety and security bound. So with that, since no one else has comments, it's yours, Councilman Krier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. First, let me say that from the moment that the Post has come to my office, since I've been in office, they've been nothing but professional. They've been well-prepared and has never not taken ownership of the previous challenges of their predecessors. And I say their predecessors because it was a different organization that was running the Post. For whatever reason, there were challenges, and it was the national body that actually took their accreditation, for lack of a better term, and not the city. And so, but since then, I know they have plans to do some good things. They've been great stewards. They've gotten some partnerships with Home Depot.
Yes.
On, to, already, to do some work in the backyard. There's work on the physical structure with the fence, with the pavement, and that has shown a level of commitment towards bringing it back. I know, spoken to Bolden Area Command, who oversees the area, I know that they have said you guys have been working well with them.
I want to thank Captain Yaz for her help and guidance.
I agree. Captain Yatomi has been a great partner, but you guys have been a great partner with them. And so, we, there are other lodges in our Ward, and don't confuse one with the other. This one is, it stands on its own merits, and I think is deserving of the changes that are presented to us today. I will concur about the security. We haven't had an issue, but maybe we split the difference. I think seven o'clock might be kind of late, because people do get out of work, as the mayor stated. Maybe we split the difference between five instead of seven and see how that goes, but also, the time change, I don't have a problem with. And so, would it be possible to take, you want to take them one at a time, whomever's staffing this, or is it Mary?
I would say.
Or you want to just take them at once? I mean, take them both, to approve the condition to change from, to stay open until 11:59 PM, and also from the hours of operation starting at 5:00 PM with a security guard.
Okay, so let's take that and pass that.
Okay.
To move it from five to 11:59 instead of the requested seven. All in favor? Oh, please, just vote, if we can do that.
Thank you, guys, and look forward to working with you. Continue to work with you.
Thank you so much for all your help. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And then the other piece was the security?
Yeah, well, that was.
Part of that?
Wasn't that part of the, Mary, or was there a second?
Yes, that is correct. So they would only be required to have two security guards starting at 5:00 PM.
Right.
Prior to that would be one security guard.
Right. That was included in that. Thanks.
Okay, so then we're finished. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good.
And, Madam Mayor, through you to Councilman Krier. Is it, we would like to bring them back at the end of February, beginning of March, to meet that other condition, where it does state that they needed to have a one-year review? That could take place today, if you wanted to consider this, or what we would recommend is just to bring them back, just to see how these new hours are operating.
I would recommend that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and again, for those of you in our audience, because Councilman Krier has to leave for the airport, we are going to hear right now Agenda Item Number 78, VAR 77267, public hearing. Applicant Charlie Concabi, owner, Square Trade Holdings LLC, for possible action or request for variance to allow an existing six-foot-tall vinyl fence in the front yard, where a maximum of five feet with a two-foot solid base is allowed on 2.22 acres, at 858 West Lake Mead Boulevard, R2 medium-low density residential zone. And staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. So this is a public hearing, and so let's go first, and I declare that public hearing open. Let's start with Mr. Summerfield, please.
Madam Mayor, this item is before you today as a result of a code enforcement case. As the owner constructed a fence without building permits and in violation of the zoning district's prescribed development standards, the request is preferential in nature, and is the result, Steph has recommended denial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased if you introduce yourself, although we know who you are.
Mayor, councilmembers, Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I'll be very brief. We, my client didn't know that they needed a permit. We've been conditioned to pull the billing permit after this is approved. As you can see by the photo that I have here on the display, there is an RTC bus stop, and the reason why we constructed at six feet was to try and block the yard from the RTC bus stop. So with that, I would just ask that you follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. If I could ask a question on this, is there any opportunity to purchase that frontage so we can move the bus stop back off the roadway? Because I know we're trying, the RTC is trying to do that everywhere in town, because it's a safety issue.
Madam Mayor, as you mentioned, that is an RTC and Public Works thing. They've been working collaboratively on trying to locate places where an easement can be purchased or additional land can be purchased to move bus shelters back. I do not know if this location is one of those that has been identified as meeting the criteria for that, but I will check in with Mr. Jansen, our Public Works Director, and mention it to him, but at this time, I do not know of any attempts to move the shelter back any further than where it's currently located.
Well, and it would seem to me that maybe to move the bus stop into an area which doesn't impose upon that private property, but a place where a cutout can be done. So I know right now, this is only about the issue as it stands, so I'll obviously ask council if they have any input, and if anybody from the public would like to comment on Agenda Item 78, would you please come forward? I'll close public hearing. And, I mean, that to me would seem the best, because I looked through that stop, and I really feel sorry for anybody that might be using the other side of the fence, and it would be better to move the bus stop. But then again, too, are they going to widen, what is that street, what is this, Lake Mead?
Yes, ma'am. This is, I believe this is Lake Mead.
Lake Mead.
Yes.
So I mean, to me, that figures and won't do anything to what you've already done. I mean, if that's approved. But look at some other location for the bus stop. But I don't know any of that, so it's just a recommendation to Councilman Krier as he moves forward. So.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. One, you know, I really, I'm not a big fan of the "I didn't know about it" mentality. I think that people who are building and developing and rehabbing know exactly what they're doing, and so I personally am not a fan of that. And to do it, and then to come and ask for forgiveness later, I think is, we've seen that so many times with so many things, and if we continue to just allow that, then everything will be "I didn't know about it." And my two years in the Planning Commission, I can't believe how many times people have built patios extending out to the street, when they knew they had a setback, "Oh, I didn't know about it." And so I do take issue with that. I want that to be on the record, that your client knows better, or they should have known better. But with that said, I don't see it being too big of a, of an issue. If they had come through the proper channels in the first place, and most likely, this would have been approved, so I am going to recommend approval and go along with Planning Commission's recommendation.
And, Councilman, what is the cross-street, the next major cross-street, either west or east of this property?
It is. I'm just looking at the map. What, do you know? Hurt, La Salsa, Revere, Lake Mead and Revere.
Okay. Well, I just really highly recommend that somebody in probably Planning talk with Public Works and just take a look at the area before there's more of this, to see if that is interfering.
Well, just FYI, I don't know if this is going to be a part of it, but we are doing a major rehabilitation project with Public Works for Lake, for Lake Mead, and I'm not sure if what's included in that with the RTC, or if there's anything with that bus stop, but it's going to be a major enhancement of Lake Mead.
Mayor? Mayor, we're a little far afield where we're probably.
From, from the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, because it has, I believe it, I shouldn't say no, pardon me, because you're the lawyer or not.
Okay.
It just, to me, has, but, I mean, I've heard kindness out of Councilman Krier that he's probably going to approve it, but it does bring to mind, there's a bigger project here, and we don't want to have to deal with this all the way down the road again and again, and it just alerts a flag to go up. So that's why I brought it up. It has nothing to do with his vote at this point, but I was wondering, as you're looking at this.
Good morning, I'm Eric. Good morning, city council. Mike Jansen, Public Works Director. Just a real quick, little comment on this. As Councilman Krier indicated, we just started design on a new project on Lake Mead. It's a joint project with North Las Vegas, from Losi Road all the way to Simmons, and one of the main components of that project is going to be to improve the bus amenities and elements, and looking at bus turnouts as well. So for sure, this will be a location we'll be looking closely at. It's right across the street from the Doolittle Complex, from the library, so this is a very high pedestrian activity area. I just wanted to let you know that for sure, this will be a location we'll be looking at very closely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Krier, was that a motion?
It was.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 78. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Jansen and Mr. Summerfield. Agenda Item 79, SUP 77216, public hearing. Applicant owner Jeffrey Eisenmen for possible action or request for special use permit for proposed accessory structure Class 1 casita use at 3733 Bradley Road, RE, Residence Estates Zone in Ward Five, also with Councilman Krier. Both Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and either the applicant or representative is before us, correct?
Yes. Gary Carlson, architect, 6440 Bristol Way, representing the client who's present in the room here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed conversion of the existing garage to an accessory structure Class 1 would be compatible with existing surrounding residential land uses and will complement surrounding existing and future rural residential development at the project conforms to the RE Residence Estates zoning district. For that reason, staff has recommended approval. And any questions? Thank you.
And would you like to add anything to the approval?
Yes. This apartment conversion is in an existing garage, which has been there for some years. You can't see it from the street, and so there's been nothing that would adversely affect anything in the neighborhood. We've had approval from the Health District for amending the septic system, so it works fine. I have to note that the clients, at one point in time, would have liked to have connected to the city sewer in front of their property, and while at the utilities department, they showed me that the city had a camera in the 36-inch sewer system, which is not really used for residential. I was quite surprised at the efficiency of the utilities department. Anyway, we'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to add comment here or be heard on this Agenda Item 79? I'll close public hearing. And, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no discussion, I'm just going to go with Staff's, excuse me, Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 79. Please vote and please post. So you are not on, that motion carries, you're not on city sewer, then?
No, that's correct. They're on a septic system.
So what happens in the future?
All the residences along Bradley are on septic systems.
So what happens?
Got any questions?
What happened to, it was just a question. We're allowed to ask questions, right, council? Okay. Question is.
Of course, of course, ma'am.
Where's Mr. Jansen? Did he leave? Sorry, we need to give you a microphone. When a complex or residence or anybody asks to hook onto city sewer, they're on a septic system, but it may, how do they do it if, and why was this turned down?
Good morning, Mayor. Mike Jansen, Public Works Director, Mayor and Council. We have a process in place for any citizen that is looking to hook up to a city sewer. They come down, they meet with our collection system staff. We look at the site, and we look to see where our nearest sewer system is, whether or not that sewer system has capacity or not. And after that first goes through, if there is no sewer system nearby to connect to, the next option would be following the Clark County Code that's related to the Health District that dictates whether or not a septic system can be used or not. So I don't know the background on this one specifically, but I'd be more than happy to meet with the citizen, bring them to our collection system team, and we walk through all the steps and see what we can do.
I'd like to make a comment. I apologize, Mayor. I didn't really bring this up as a concern, just as a point of, they have a 36-inch transmission line, sewer line there that connects other sewer systems, and it's not intended to connect to, for the residences, which I found out. So there's really no problem, no concern. I was just impressed that they showed me the sewer with a camera inside the sewer. I couldn't imagine.
Yeah, that is interesting.
Mayor, just a quick comment on that. One of your lines, "You must inspect what you expect." We use that all the time in Public Works, where we have to constantly make sure we know how our sewer system's condition is. So periodically, throughout certain periods of the year, we do video analysis of our sewer lines to make sure that they don't have any failures, that there's no overwear and tear, and it's just part of our overall program for making sure that our infrastructure underground, even though you can't always see it, there's a way for us to see it using the camera system, and so that's probably what the citizen's referring to.
And really, one of the reasons I was thinking of this is having been an owner of a property, or my husband and I owned a property that was a septic tank property. We had to replace it twice, and then it came to the point that we were going to have to replace it again, and we decided to go ahead and pursue sewer hookup. And so because of the capacity of the sewer line, forever, they're not going to be able to do this? It sounds like.
I, we'd have to take a closer look at this one, Mayor, and just look at all the background info on, we sometimes have projects planned to do relief lines or to do additional capacity expansions on our collection system, so I'd be more than happy to meet with the citizen and take a closer look.
Okay, if they want, only if you want. I mean, I was bringing it up, because I remember going through the process, and it became really very, very expensive to keep replacing septic tanks, and it was reasonable to assume that we'd hook into a sewer line, but then if in fact the sewer line is at capacity, what happens in the future? I mean, so, just a question, you'll do what you need to do.
Right. Thanks very much.
So you've been approved. Thank you very much, yes?
I know, sir.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, this was no problem.
Okay. So you're free to hit the airport. Where are you going?
National League of Cities.
National League of Cities, San Antonio, beautiful. Thank you very much. That motion was approved. Okay, well, now we're going backwards, right, to 43? Administrative discussion for possible action regarding approval of a modification to existing collective bargaining agreements between the city, between Las Vegas City Employees Association, LVCEA, and the City of Las Vegas, $267,000 general fund. Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Scott Adams, city manager. This is an item that, under state law, I am obligated to present to you, make the initial presentation, but I'll say I have not been in the details on that, and if you have any questions, you, I'm here with Morgan Davis, who's led our collective bargaining team on this, and I also believe Deandre Cruthers, the new president of the LVCEA, is also here and can address this document as well. But this is a revision to our collective bargaining agreement. It resulted from some grievances, but they were, I think, positively resolved, the primary one of which was how we're going to be handling going forward the compensation for employee work on union business. If you remember, a couple sessions ago, the state law has changed that obligated our collective bargaining units to compensate us for the time they spent on Union Act collective bargaining units to compensate us for the time they spent on union activity, their employees did. The LVCEA used a birthday holiday, or part of a birthday holiday, across their employees to pay for that. That's been revisited and wrapped into this amendment, and so it kind of flipped it back around, that was unwound the last session, and that is the primary issue that's addressed in this agreement, but there are a couple others. Should you have any questions about the details of it, Morgan would be glad to answer any of your questions.
Because President Cruthers is here, you'll respond, or you'll be ready as well?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Mr. Adams said, Morgan Davis, Assistant City Attorney. The real item that's in front of you today that requires your consideration and action, and staff is recommending, it is an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement. In essence, we are reverting to language pre-existing SB 241 and 215. It restores the birthday holiday that CEA employees enjoyed prior to that amendment.
Okay, any questions for Morgan, anything? Okay, please, if you would, and announce yourself as well, even though I did.
Madam Mayor, Deandre Cruthers, President of LVCEA.
Any comments, questions to this?
This has been a long heart, a long fought battle. We filed a grievance, this is the outcome of the grievance. We're just hoping that you guys approve it, and we can hopefully celebrate our birthday for a whole 10 hours like we used to before SB 241 in 2015.
Thank you, thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, Mayor Protem, how about a motion?
Well, happy birthday, and with that, I motion to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 43, please vote, and please post. Motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate it, Council. Also, this is a retro, back to July 1, which is the first day of fiscal 2019, I'm sorry, 20, is it 2020?
Okay, and you'll confirm that, yes, if you wouldn't mind for the record?
Yes, that's in the backup, and that's the language of the agreement, it reverts back to the beginning of the fiscal year, which will be the last year of the existing collective bargaining agreement. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Agenda Item 44, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Complaint to Set a Hearing Date for Disciplinary Action Against Jade Garden Massage and Diana Yu Day, individually and as sole proprietor whose place business is located 6706 West Cheyenne Avenue, Las Vegas, Clark County, Nevada, 89108, holder of massage established license number MO3-00161, and independent massage therapist license number M12-00701 for violations of the Las Vegas Municipal Code, Ward 4, Councilman Anthony.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, I'm Darcy Adalby-Herd, Business License Section Manager. This item before you is in regards to the massage establishment license, a Jade Garden Massage. They received their business license on January 18, 2006. This discussion is to approve the complaint and to set a hearing for disciplinary action against the business, and the owner of record is Diana Yu Dai. On November 22, 2017, our business license internet investigator found advertisements for the business on websites that are known to solicit sexual activities. There have been two undercover operations by Metro that resulted in the officer being solicited for prostitution, one on November 28, 2017, and the most recent one on August 21 of this year. During the first undercover operation, the owner's sister, Jing Dai, was arrested. The owner was not available, so Metro issued an emergency order to suspend the business license for one week. Business licensing did an inspection, and on November 29, 2017, City Licensing Division issued notices of violations and fines in the amount of $750. The violation of Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.02370A for violating state law NRS 201.654, engaging in prostitution or solicitation of prostitution, Las Vegas Municipal Code 6.5212OB, allowing massage therapists to engage in or solicit sexual activity, and failure to maintain an employee register. Diana Dai appealed the fines, and a civil hearing was heard on January 11, 2018. Following the hearing, a decision was made to uphold all three civil citations and the $750 fine. During the August 21, 2019 Metro operation, Diana Dai, the owner, was arrested for soliciting the officer. Since receiving her business license, she has violated the terms of said license by providing or allowing others to provide sexual services and prostitution in exchange for money, all in violation of the business license, the laws of the State of Nevada, and Las Vegas Municipal Code. We request that City Council approve this complaint and set a hearing date and a time certain no later than 60 days from the date of the approval of the complaint, and we would recommend this item to be heard on January 15, 2020, at 11:00 AM.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Curtis, anything to add?
Nothing to add, Your Honor. Deputy City Attorney John Curtis also appearing.
Thank you. Comments, questions from Council? Okay, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to set a hearing for January 15, 2020.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve, to set a hearing date for January 15, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item 45, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Request for Public Services for Monthly Rate Increase of 74 cents per residential customer due to unforeseen economic circumstances. This is in reference to all wards, good morning.
Good morning, Vanetta Alpier, Director of Finance for the City of Las Vegas. The item you have before you is a discussion regarding the request of Republic Services to ask for a monthly recycling rate increase of 74 cents per residential customer due to economic unforeseen circumstances. The unforeseen economic circumstances is the policy changes implemented by China regarding recyclable materials, and Republic indicates that these policies have caused their costs to rise. Staff has met with Republic Services several times over the past four months, and we have reviewed materials that demonstrate changes in the market for recycled materials have raised their prices, and it has greatly impacted the revenue they are able to generate from those recyclables. We have with us here today Jennifer Lasevich with Kemper Crowell, and she is going to be making comments on behalf of Republic Services.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, Jennifer Lasevich, 1980. Let me start again, Jennifer Lasevich, 1980, Festival Plaza Drive, here today on behalf of Republic Services. Also with me is Vince Sinudo, Jennifer Simic, and Jeremy Walters, if you have any questions that I cannot answer. As Vanetta indicated, we are today before you to discuss a section of both our franchise agreement as well as Chapter 9.08 of your municipal code that references unforeseen circumstances. Republic has not sought a rate increase of any kind in over 20 years. We would not be before you today if we had our choice. We don't have a choice, we are here today under that statute seeking relief from policies that have been adopted by China. For years, China has been the largest importer of recyclable materials from the United States, and has accepted over 40% of the world's recyclable materials. Prior to 2017, China accepted baled recyclable materials with a residual contamination rate of 5%. While that seems low, when they adopted policies known as Green Fence and Operation National Sword, they reduced that residual contamination rate from 5% to 0.5%. That equates to a 90% reduction in what China would accept. Other recycling importers around the world, such as Vietnam, Malaysia, Thailand, and India, have enacted similar policies. So our other recycling markets followed the similar policies that China did in that reduced residual contamination rate. These policies have had a negative impact on all companies engaged in recycling business by driving up the operational costs and seeing a decline in the commodity pricing. We've waited almost two years before coming before you to see if either these policies would change, or would they be here to stay, or would they get worse. We think they're here to stay, we don't think they're going to get worse, and we know they're not going to go away. So we spent the past several months working with your staff, I want to thank all of them, Vanetta, Gary, Tom, as well as Gina Bishop, for meeting with us almost every other week for several months, so that we could go through this issue, because it's very technical, and there's a lot of financial analysis that goes into it, and we appreciate their time. Some of the information that we provided to them included examples of other cities that have adopted recycling adjustments, which are increases of between $2 to $3 a month. We, as Republic Services, have worked hard to make sure that the request that we are bringing before you today is actually under a dollar. Our request is to ask for a 74 cent per month adjustment on all residential recycling bills. Now, I do want to point this out, even with this recycling adjustment, I think that this is helpful, for those of you that were here in 2017 when we did our contract extension, we showed a comparison of where Republic and Southern Nevada Falls as it relates to other residential solid waste rates across similarly situated cities. Thank you. As you can see on this chart, the City of Las Vegas is a monthly rate of $15.20, that's our base rate, and the other similarly situated cities, we referenced Chula Vista, by the way, as second in line, because they just adopted a recycling adjustment for all of their residential customers, and that is their monthly bill with that recycling adjustment in place. We also included El Paso, Texas, San Antonio, we did go with an urban city such as Seattle, and then even down to Glendale, Arizona. As you can see on this, we are still the lowest rates for solid waste in terms of monthly service rates at $15.20, and even if you were to approve this recycling adjustment that we're asking today, we are still substantially below a number of our sister cities that do the same services that we do, although I would like to say that we do it the best In your backup, and I won't go through it, but in your backup, we provided a copy of a report that was prepared by coincidentally to Councilman Creer, the National League of Cities, that talked about what other municipalities across the country are doing, because it is an issue that is affecting every municipality, every county government, as well as any private business that's engaged in recycling efforts. One of the examples cited was in Durango, Colorado. They have passed a surcharge of $2.69 per month to continue their recycling efforts. Republic has always been a good corporate partner, and we have worked hard to make sure that our request is under a dollar and only 74 cents per month. We appreciate your consideration of this request. I do want to point out a couple of things that are in your backup, but I think it's important, because we really tailored this request to be specific to China's National Sword policies. We have specifically talked with staff, your Agenda item includes this, and if you are comfortable approving this request, these would be some of the conditions that we would ask that you place on this. The recycling adjustment will be embedded into the monthly residential solid waste and recycling rate for an initial term of five years, it would be subject to CPIU adjustments. During this term, Republic will not seek an additional increase of the recycling adjustment based upon China's National Sword policies. If the National Sword policies are still in effect at the end of five-year period, of the initial five-year period, the recycling adjustment shall continue for another term of five years. If Republic seeks an additional rate adjustment due to China's National Sword policies in the second five-year term, the City Council shall have the discretion to determine if an additional recycling adjustment is warranted based upon new unforeseen economic circumstances. One final point that I want to leave you with, Republic believes very strongly that recycling is the right thing to do. It's good for our environment, and it is the right thing to do. By way of statistic, and if any of you have had an opportunity to tour our recycling center, whether here at the city, or if any of you are watching from home, it is open for tours, and it is quite impressive to see just what goes into these recyclable bales that we ship to other countries, but it is the right thing to do, and sometimes you don't think about this, but just as a little fact, Republic keeps 90,000 tons of material from going to its landfill on an annual basis by turning those into recyclable materials that they can sell on the market. And I think that that's important to note, because that's good for our environment, it extends the life of our landfill, but it also shows you their commitment to ensuring that they want to continue doing recycling, it's just that this Operation National Sword policy is beyond our control, and we need that additional increase in order to keep up with the costs of recycling. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Again, Jennifer, Vince, and Jeremy are also in the audience, if there's a question that you have of them. Thank you.
I think, thank you very much for your comments. I do think one of the questions, and I'm sure all are wondering, if in fact China and other recyclable areas, countries, realize the economic impact it's having on them that they have curtailed and allowed an open field. What if they reopen? Is that, is something written into this contract that you will be back in front of us, and what happens in that eventuality, which I would think has to happen in China and Korea, wherever, Vietnam, wherever, these recyclables currently have been loaded?
Well, I think, we tried to account for that. What we saw, it wasn't just China that adopted these policies, as I mentioned earlier, it was Vietnam, Malaysia, Thailand, and India. They did the exact same thing in terms of the contamination rate, so for that reason, we believe it's here to stay, and it's going to take a while for new markets to open up, whether that's in the United States or some other country. And we don't quite have a crystal ball as to when that'll happen, but that's why we did the initial five-year term. So for five years, we won't come, we're going to take a chance, we're not going to come back to you for an additional increase over that 74 cents, but we're also saying, we think we need that 74 cents for that entire five-year term. Now, in the second five-year term, if those National Sword policies are still in effect, and we are still suffering the cost ratio that we're trying to balance out a little bit, that 74 cents can continue on, but if it gets worse, and that's always an option, we would be before you at that time, potentially, for an additional increase above the 74 cents that would be up to this council to determine if they would approve.
I'm going the other direction, though, that because of the economic impact to these countries having curtailed their processing, should they then go back into the business, is there anything that's into the contract that will change any of the details that we would be agreeing to if this passes?
I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. So, at the conclusion of the initial five-year term, yes. So if that happened, and it went the other way, and it got better, things got better for us, it would also get better ultimately, because we wouldn't need to go forward with that second five-year term, we could reduce or eliminate that 74 cents from the bill.
And what is the timeline for review? How far in advance of the five-year timeline? Will it have to come back to make that determination? Because we don't want to put in a deadline and then miss hearing the particulars because we missed the deadline. What's in the contract for the jumpstart to review that issue? Two years, one year, six months ahead of time, whatever, before the rollover?
I, well, my suggestion would be, and please, if Vanetta, correct me if you disagree, but I would say, given that this learning curve between us and staff in educating on this process took about four and a half months, I would say six months prior to the end of the initial five-year term, we would start meeting with staff again. Now, if you would like it in advance of that, we'd be fine, but that seems to be a comfortable timeline, given what we just went through.
Thank you very much, and I appreciated it as a customer all these years, and just that you have held your rate, which is why I was so enthusiastic about giving the extension for 20 years. Your company, my perspective, my family's perspective, top of the line. So, opening this up for any comments, questions from Council? Yes, please, Councilwoman Seaman.
So I have to admit that when this came across my desk, I asked my staff to find reasons to vote against it, but all the research that we, all the research that we did told us that voting for it was the right thing to do. The research did show us that the recycling industry faces a much different economic environment than it did five years ago, and China's restriction limiting contamination of recyclables from 2.05 from 5%, not only affected Republic Services, but recyclers across the nation. And I don't believe that the solution is to go back to burying it all in the landfill, because I know that 90,000 tons of material is what we're keeping out of our landfills. because I know that 90,000 tons of material is what we're keeping out of our landfills, greatly extending the life of those landfills. So I think that 74 cents a month is a small price to pay to continue with that effort. I can also tell you that I've had overwhelming volume of emails supporting the request that the residents of Las Vegas realize that doing the right thing for the environment sometimes comes with a price. So for, it is with these reasons, and your pledge that you will not come back for five years, that I'll be supporting it.
Thank you.
And therefore, because of your unusual comment in the opening address of this, I'm going to ask you to make the motion.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve.
Agenda item 45.
Agenda, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. This motion?
Should I just make sure that that's subject to the conditions that I read?
Yes, and our attorney, yes?
Yeah, that's fine, subject to all the conditions laid out by Ms. Lazovich.
Which is also laid out in your agenda.
And the six-month prior to the end of the contract, the review.
That's not actually laid out in the contract, but we will make sure we put that in our staff records, so that we will start talking, just as we did this time with them. We do talk to you a lot. Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Everybody except Councilman Anthony, everybody has voted?
Vote in order.
Okay, the motion carries, and Councilman?
Okay.
No, it wasn't a public hearing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, you can say some at the end, because I will be opening up for public comment at the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to Agenda Item 46, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding, no, we did that. We're on to 47, which is Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Greg Toussaint, Ward Four, Seat of Traffic and Parking Commission. Mr. Toussaint is eligible for reappointment, has the recommendation of Public Works Director, and wishes to continue to serve. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Greg Toussaint has done a great job on this commission, so I will make a motion to reappoint him.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to move forward and reappoint Mr. Toussaint, Agenda 47. Please vote and please post. There it comes. It says waiting. He did it. Yeah, but it says waiting on our computer monitors. Uh huh. There it is. Just a little temperamental. Motion carries. Agenda Item 48, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Richard Plaster, Ward Two, Seat of the Arts Commission. Mr. Mark Zachman occupies the Ward Two seat, which had a term expiration of October 14, 2019. Mr. Plaster is eligible and wishes to serve. Councilwoman Seaman, do you have a motion for this item?
I do. I make a motion.
Your mic is not on, I don't think. Thank you.
I make a motion that Richard Plaster would be appointed to the Ward Two Arts Commission seat.
Thank you very much. And that motion, vote and post, and it carries. Thank you very much. And now, we're on to Agenda Item 49. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Members to the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program, YNAP. Grant Review Board from the following list of nominees: Maria Farado, Laurel Bell, Jose Rodriguez, Samantha Monson, Serena Saracio, Rebecca Richard, and the mayor's designee, Rebecca Scousen, Ward Four, Harry Williams, Ward Five, Chance Mataventura, Ward Six, Ido Yuraldi, I do it wrong, Yuraldi, thank you very much, Ward Three, and the Appointment of nominees Deborah Reyes and Andrew Sierra, Lexi Wilder, Nigel Murray, and Joshua Whipple, Mayor Designee, and Dorian Stonebarger, Ward One, Brianna Ramirez, Ward Two. The Department of Youth Development Social Innovation recommends the aforementioned reappointments and appointments. And that would be my motion, and so please vote on that motion, and then post. It says waiting on our screens. Still says waiting. There it is, popped in. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Move on to Agenda Item 50, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Kevin Mills to the Commission for the Las Vegas Centennial. The maximum 15 members have not been reached yet, and I wish to nominate Mr. Kevin Mills for the board. So that is my nomination. Would you please vote and post, please? That motion carries, so congratulations there as well. Agenda Item 51, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of County Services Director Kathy Thomas Gibson to serve as the alternate staff member representative on the AB 73 Working Group established during the 80th Legislative Session 2019 to address issues related to homelessness. It has been determined that a staff alternate from each jurisdiction must be named to ensure quorum, and City Manager Scott Adams is suggesting Ms. Thomas Gibson to be appointed as his alternate, which she has accepted. So may I have a motion, please? Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item Number 51.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Thomas Gibson. You are now on board. Agenda Item 52, Recommended Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 2019-40. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-40, In Ordinance to Generally Prohibit Within the Pedestrian Mall and Surrounding Areas the Use or Possession of Certain Types of Weapons and Implants, as Well as Toy and Replica Firearms, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve Agenda Item 52. Please vote and please post. There it is, popped. They can't see on their monitor that it says waiting. Motion carries. Agenda Item 53, New Bills. Items Number 53 through 57. Bills Number 2019-44 through 2019-48 will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting on Monday, December 2, 2019. City Attorney, would you read the new bills, please?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-44, In Ordinance Adding to LVMC Chapter 13.04, A New Section to Authorize the Department of Operations and Maintenance to Determine and Designate Hours of Cleaning for Public Sidewalks and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-45, In Ordinance to amend LVMC Chapter 6.50, To Provide an Exception to Certain Work Card Requirements for Convenience Stores that Sell Alcoholic Beverages, Clarify Work Card Requirements for Persons Providing Security in Certain Alcoholic Beverage Establishments, and Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-46, In Ordinance to amend the Minimum Special Use Permit Requirements Applicable to Marijuana Dispensaries as Found in LVMC Section 19.12.70, To Require a 1,000-foot Minimum Distance Separation Between Marijuana Dispensaries, Incorporate Distance Separation Requirements Between Marijuana Dispensaries and Non-Restrictive Gaming Establishments as Found in State Law, and Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-47, In Ordinance to amend LVMC Chapter 13.36, To Expand the Prohibition of Smoking in City Parks So As to (1) Include the Use of Electronic Smoking Devices, and (2) Generally Apply Throughout All Park Areas Instead of Specified Areas, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2019-48, In Ordinance to repeal LVMC Section 19.16.105 pertaining to the Repurposing of Certain Golf Courses and Open Spaces, and to Provide for Other Related Matters. In addition, Mayor, if I might, just a point of clarification for the record, Jeff Dorick, Deputy City Attorney, on this final new bill, Item 57, Bill Number 2019-48, we inadvertently put the wrong section in the public agenda, both written and online. We just wanted to make that note. It is Section 19.16.105, and that will be corrected going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. New Bills, Number 2019-44 through 2019-48 are assigned to the December 2, 2019. Recommending Committee Members, Councilman Anthony and Knutson, and Councilwoman Mayor Protem Fiori. If any designated or unable to attend the clerk's office, will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my discretion and direction. Thank you. We are now moving into the next body of bills and issues. So we are moving into Number, right, Number 58. Goodness. This is Agenda Item 58, for Possible Action. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table, withdrawn, or held in abance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, we absolutely have nothing at the moment, so we will continue.
Well, just on we go. So Agenda Items 59 through 63 may be considered between non-public public hearing items with no condition changes. Any persons representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. I want to pause here, because, Council, Mr. Scott?
Yes, Mayor.
Having voted on the consent agenda, there's an item on there I want to pull back. So how do I move that backwards?
You want to rehear something?
Yes.
Oh, okay, just do most of a reconsideration on that particular item?
Okay, just on that particular item?
On that particular item. If that's the only one you want to hear.
I want to make a motion to bring back Agenda Item 56 that was on the consent agenda, which is Bill Number 2019-47, Amends LVMC Chapter 1336, To Expand the Prohibition of Smoking in City Parks So As to (1) Include the Use of Electronic Smoking Devices, and (2) Generally Apply Throughout All Parks Instead of Specified Areas. This is sponsored by Councilman Knutson.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Apparently, from the city clerk and from Deputy City Attorney, you didn't take any action on that motion, but if you'd like to make some comments with regard to that item, you're welcome to do that.
Okay, so it was, I thought it was on consent. This is Agenda Item 56?
Yes.
So it's going to go to?
It was just read into the?
Oh, so just going on to recommend it?
Correct. That's correct.
So forget everything I said. Everybody at home, I hope you're drinking tea, or coffee, or a glass of water. Forget what I just said. All right, so back we go to now 59. Okay, EOT 77609, Applicant Owner, DCB Inc., on a Request for First Extension of Time on an Approved Variance, VAR 71086, to Allow a 10-foot tall block wall with chain-link fence and razor wire, where 8 feet is the maximum height allowed along the west perimeter; an 11-foot-tall block wall with chain-link fence with razor wire, where 8 feet is the maximum height allowed along the north perimeter; 11-foot-tall chain-link fence with razor wire, where 5 feet is the maximum height allowed along the east perimeter; a 0-foot side-yard setback, where 10 feet is required for an existing shade structure, with razor wire; and razor wire interior screen walls on .23 acres at 4730th Street M, Industrial Zone, Ward Three, with Councilwoman Diaz. Number 60, EOT 77589, Applicant Jackpock Jonies, DW LLC, DBA, Lucky Seven Owner Pine Development Inc., on a Request for First Extension of Time on a Non-Conforming Liquor Establishment Tavern, used at 608 North Rainbow Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward One, Councilman Knutson. Number 61, EOT 7719, Applicant PJ Enterprise LLC, Owner Aristotle Holding LTD, who requests for a Third Extension of Time for a Non-Conforming Used Tavern at 1531 South Las Vegas Boulevard, C2 General Commercial Zone, Councilwoman Diaz, Ward Three. Number 62, RQR 77459, Applicant Owner, Hideo Miyashita, on a Required Review of an Approved Special Use Permit, SUP 72960, for Short-Term Residential Rental Use at 6216 Clarice Avenue, R1, Single Family Residential Zone, Ward One, Councilman Knutson. And Number 63, ROC 77626, Applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, Owner, City of Las Vegas, on a Request for Review of Condition Number 14, of an Approved Special Use Permit, SUP 72606, for an Off-Premise Sign Use, which states, "The proposed sign shall not be located within the public right-of-way or interfere with sight-visibility restriction zones. The proposed ground-mounted bases shall not be located within existing or proposed public sewer or drainage easements on the south side of Adams Avenue, west of Interstate 15, CV Civic Zone, Ward Five," with Councilman Creer. Staff recommends approval on all items which are public hearings, and I now declare them open. Anyone wishing to be heard on Items 59 through 63. I have a question on the razor wire, Council. I thought that was prohibited, or should ask Mr. Sarantes. I thought there was prohibited use of razor wire.
Hold on a second, I want to record. Mayor, I'll defer to our planning parks. I think it's a planning restriction.
Madam Mayor, yes. So razor wire is a prohibited material unless approved by a variance or a special or a site development review. So originally, they had come in on this variance request to ask for these wall heights with this material, and they had received that approval. They have yet to complete their permitting process on that, so that's why they're doing an extension of time. But, yeah, typically is a base material, it is prohibited, but there is discretion for the City Council to approve it if they can make a security case for why they feel like they need to have that to protect whatever they're trying to do on their property.
So will you be reporting back to us on that, or not?
No, ma'am. So there's no anticipated report back on this. This is, at this point, they just need to get a building permit to substantiate that the walls are structurally sound, and then they'll be able to, they'll be able to continue to conduct business at this location.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing. If you'd be good enough to state your name for the record?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Donald Williams, again, a family member, but also counsel for the owners of the property. We actually went through the razor wire argument with you guys, I think, last year, and got approval on that. The real issue is needing more time to get approval on the shade structure, which has been there since before my family owned that property in 1990, I think, is when we took that property over. My brother Doug is out of the country today. He runs the property, owns the property, if you will. He just needs a little more time, because they're going to do some testing with respect to the footings, even though it's been there that long, just to satisfy staff.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard? Closed public hearing. And Mayor Protem may have a motion for the one motion, one vote, Items 59 through 63, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the one motion, one vote, Items 59 through 63.
Thank you very much. Would everyone please vote and please post? And they carry. Thank you very much. And now, we will move on to Agenda Item 64. EOT 77578, Public Hearing, Applicant Owner, Jerry Monica Schwartz Block Trust, et al., for Possible Action, Request for Fourth Extension of Time for a Non-Conforming Liquor Establishment Tavern, used at 3540 West Sahara Avenue, Suite E1, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, and Ward One, with Councilman Knutson. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I'm This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and is the applicant or representative present?
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the city council, Brian Hardy, 10,001 Park Run Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89145. I hear on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, the staff finds that the applicant has demonstrated that the request for the extension of time is due to an economic hardship. The health, safety, and welfare of the public would not be jeopardized by the continuation of liquor establishment tavern use at this location. For these reasons, staff is therefore recommending approval of this extension of time with a one-year time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments you wish to make?
Other than we truly appreciate you guys holding this over to this agenda item today as opposed to it was on a couple of weeks ago, I had to accommodate my schedule because I was out of the country trying an arbitration at the time. So I really appreciate that, and we look forward to being able to get this thing built up and taken care of. We have a tenant who's ready to move in as soon as they can finish up their tenant improvement, so we just need this extension to get amended.
Excuse me. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on agenda item 64? I'll close public hearing, and Councilman Knutson, please.
Mayor, with staff's recommendation, I move for approval.
As a motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda items 65 through 68. 65, G P A, 77243, a request for a general plan amendment from O Office to D R Desert Rural Density Residential. Number 66, Z O N 72244, a request for rezoning from C V Design Commercial to R E Residence Estates. Number 67, S U P 77245, a request for a special use permit for a 65-bed convalescent care facility nursing home use. Number 68, S D R 77246, on a request for a site development plan review for proposed 37,000-square-foot convalescent care facility nursing home on 2.62 acres located on the northwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Shetland Road, C D Design Commercial and R E Residence Estate Zones, proposed R E Residence Estates. The applicant owner Shetland Land LLC on .97850 and 860 Shetland Road. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on all items. These are in Ward 1 with Councilman Knutson, are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
Your name, please.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is A.J. Plank, 10,024 Willowbrook Pond, here representing the applicant.
And with you is...
Hello. My name is Ari Steinberg. I am applicant.
You grew up on me. I've known you since you were teeny tiny. How nice to see you.
Lots of miracle growth.
Awesome. Okay, Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning will match adjacent properties to the north of the subject site, and staff supports the request. The proposed development is compatible with surrounding development in the area, and the requested landscape exceptions for plant materials will not have a negative impact on the existing single-family residential dwellings or commercial developments that surround the site. Staff is therefore recommending approval of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments you'd like to add to Mr. Summerfield, please?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to take a minute and talk about the history of the property a little bit, because the context helps address some of the neighbor concerns, I think. The exhibit before you shows an earlier boundary proposed for the medical district. This boundary was not approved, but this is what was proposed at the time that the applicant bought this land. The applicant is, has a long history of bringing healthcare services to the valley, and the intention was to build a site, our site is right about here, to build a project that was consistent with the medical district. And what we had proposed at the time was a two-story medical office building that would have supported the medical district. We actually went in front of planning, or I should say not in front, but we did our pre-application meeting with planning with that two-story medical office building, and our justification at the time was, look, we're in the medical district, and we think that this is a viable project. They told us, actually, you're not in the medical district, even though this boundary was what was available on the website at the time, on the city's website. The city had actually changed so that the medical district stopped at Rancho, which essentially pulled the rug out from under the project a little bit, because the justification of medical support services was no longer viable. So the applicant pulled that, rather than trying to push it forward, and worked hard to try to provide an alternate plan moving forward that would be consistent with the city vision as well as the neighbors. Honestly, at the time, who's to say if they would have even bought the land if they'd have known that it wasn't actually going to be in the medical district? The one thing that did change, though, is right about the time this whole thing was going on, the applicant had a very close family member pass due to complications with Alzheimer's and dementia. And this brought up the opportunity to really do something to help the community. They experienced firsthand the challenges to address those concerns with a loved one and experienced firsthand the shortage, the massive shortage that we have in our community for expert services in the memory care industry. So the thought at the time was, we would look at that option, thinking not only is it needed in the community, it's a valuable amenity, it's in a neighborhood that's aging, influential aging neighborhood, and it's still adjacent to the medical district, which is appropriate. So with that said, the application before you is essentially a nursing home that is a specialty boutique nursing home with a 100% focus on memory care, Alzheimer's, dementia, and that sort of thing. Now, like you mentioned, there are several applications before you. The bulk of the application, the general plan amendment and the rezone, is actually for the parcel up against Charleston. Currently, the two rear parcels are zoned RE, and a convalescent care facility is allowed in RE with special use permit. So what we intend to do is rezone and revise the general plan for this parcel up front to make it the same as the two in the back, rather than proposing it all be changed to commercial, which is more invasive to the neighbors. So the four applications that you read, the bulk of which have to do with changing that front parcel to RE, and then getting the use permit for the use. In terms of the design of the project, we were very sensitive all along to neighborhood concerns, knowing how many projects have been proposed and failed on this site because of a very active neighbor community. We did everything that we could to try to sort of pre-address any concerns that may come up. You can see in the plan, the project is located as much up against Shetland as possible. All of the access, the vast majority of the access, the parking, all of the service entrance happens off of Charleston. None of that comes off of Shetland. There is one entrance on Shetland, because we needed to get something in the front door, but also because we needed a second exit out of the site for fire truck routing, so they would not take the fire truck in and back it out. So we really tried to get it so that we didn't need to have that driveway, but we do need it. So we made a concerted effort to get it as close to Charleston as absolutely possible, understanding that traffic along Shetland was going to be a major concern to the neighbors. We pushed the building as far south as we could away from the property line. We have the enhanced landscape along that back edge. Honestly, what works out better for this site would have been if we had taken this driveway through behind the building, but that's not what would have worked best for the neighbors, so we didn't propose it. So that said, again, I think we're at roughly 65 max in the number of specialty patient beds. May end up being less than that. It's relatively small. Like I said, boutique sort of use. It is 24 hours, but it's a nursing home, so there's not a lot of traffic. It's more of a residential use with a business component. In terms of the design, we made every effort to be compatible with the CD overlay, to keep the building low, one-story, 21 feet. The architecture for the project, this is probably the best rendering, is low, unassuming, residential in nature, hopefully compatible with the neighborhood residences. So again, the story I'm trying to explain here is that we really, we feel that we've gone out of our way to address, pre-address as many neighborhood concerns as possible. That being said, we did have a chance to meet with the neighbors in a neighborhood meeting, and they were nice enough to admit upfront that there was nothing that we could do to get their support on this project. There were 25 to 30 neighbors that showed up to the neighborhood meeting. It was overwhelming against the project, but I think one of the telling things is that there was no real consensus for why. Some of the neighbors didn't want any development at all. Many of the neighbors didn't want anything on those back two parcels that was not a residential estate. Many of the neighbors were open to a commercial use on the front part of the property, but were against the 24-hour nature of the facility. So there's no real consensus as to why they were against the project in terms of use. As we suspected would be the case, the traffic along Shetland was a major concern to them, and we explained that we tried to do what we could, but we need that driveway for fire truck access. One of the things that came up at the time in the neighborhood meeting was they're very attached to their estate streetscape, which is, you know, no curb and gutter, no sidewalk, no lighting, that kind of thing, and they proposed that we do something similar. I met with the planner involved after the meeting, who told me that such a thing would not be consistent with the land development plan and would require an amendment. And not an amendment, he didn't say this, but it was my opinion that it was unspoken, it was not an amendment that would really get staff recommendation behind it. But I think the most important takeaway from that neighborhood meeting was at the end, when I asked the neighbors, look, is there anything we could do, offer you to get your support of this project? And they said, well, you know, even if you could get the streetscape improvements that we want, or lack of improvements that we want, and get rid of the driveway on Shetland, we still would not support the project. So our takeaway, even though we did what we could, was that we knew it was going to be an uphill battle. In closing, I want to add that I did receive an email from one of the neighbors Monday of this week, essentially saying that they recognize the efforts that we've put through to try to make a project that's compatible, and though they're not crazy about the project, they do have some requests for moving forward. And I'm sure many of the neighbors are here, and you'll hear from them. The three requests, the first one is simply a reiteration of that request that we keep the estate streetscape, especially, actually, if I pull up the site plan here, what they would like to do, this parcel, let's see, this parcel across the street here is commercial, and it has all of the normal city streetscape with the sidewalk and curb and gutter. What they're asking us to do is only take our streetscape adjacent to that parcel, and once you hit here and you now have those residential estates across the street, we would take that estate look that doesn't have the curb and gutter and somehow transition into that. I'll say, in general, we're not opposed to that. However, we understand from planning that that's not consistent with the land development code. And the biggest thing for us is that this was sort of just dropped on us on Monday, and we really don't want this to go any further. So while we're open to suggestions for how to make that work within the land development code for the neighbors, we would like a final action today, so we don't want this to drag out for another set of hearings. So we're open to making that work if there's some mechanism that that can be done, maybe through a condition of approval or something. The second item was a small boulder monument that had the rural estate sign on. That's totally fine. I think the applicant is willing to put that monument in for them. And the final option, the final request that they asked for was a sign here at this driveway that says, you know, "Right turn only," to try to keep traffic from going down Shetland. Again, we're completely fine with this, as long as city traffic will approve that as well. So again, I'm trying to reiterate that we want to do everything that we can to make this project successful with the neighbors and work with them, but this hitting us at the last minute has kind of put us in a bit of a bind, so we're looking for some help there.
Okay, and could you just, for Mr. Summerfield and his team, repeat the request, which you said did not pass muster, on coming up Shetland right there with the landscaping buffer for the residence across the street that you said was not within code? Just want to make sure that we have that in the record.
Right, so the development code says that we have to have a sidewalk curb and gutter and an associated amount of landscape next to the sidewalk as part of the streetscape standards. When you go back further into this development, even though, you know, mostly because it's so old, there isn't any of that. And I think the intent there is that that area between the property and kind of the right-of-way improvements would be used for equestrian activity.
Right.
So what they would like to see is that same lack of improvement that they currently have all the way up to here on this site, where there would be no curb and gutter, no sidewalk.
That's what I wanted you to reiterate, if you could, for Mr. Summerfield, who now I'm going to turn this over to him, then get public comment, and then, of course, give it over to Councilman Knutson.
Madam Mayor, so unfortunately, that would require a variance to make a change like that. That's not something we can just do as a condition here, because those streetscapes are required by your code. So my suggestion would be, one, if the council, councilman in his motion, if he's willing to entertain that as a site consideration, what he could do is he could direct, he could approve this, because there's going to be quite a bit of work they have to do before they would get to a point that they'd need to do those street improvements, if that were to be his decision or the council's decision, and then direct the applicant to submit a subsequent variance. And then, once that variance is approved, then they would have to submit revised site plans and do an administrative update to this site development review that's before you today. But my advice would be to act on this application today as presented, but if there is a shift in what your expectations as a council are, we can probably get that wrapped up for them before it would impact their timelines, but that would not be something that you can condition specifically today.
Because that's not agendized, I realize that. So any other comments on this, other than gaining staff approval?
No, ma'am. The application is completely in order, as the applicant has indicated, they've worked extensively to make adjustments to their plan when they realized that the conditions for this property were different than what they'd maybe been when they were originally looking at procuring it. They've broken up the massing of the building, and it's a single-story building, so that it can be consistent and compatible with the adjacent development, both the residential and commercial, and so staff is fully in support of this project.
Thank you. All right, public comment. Anyone wishing to be heard on this, any of these, 65, 66, 67, 68? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Chris Andersfeld. I live at 825 Shetland Road. That's the property directly across Shetland. I oppose the project. I and many in the community believe that that property should stand as it is. Here's a rendering of what we and the code, original code, says it should be. It should be two residential estates next to a commercial property. This is a pretty, you know, these properties don't really exist anymore, you know, three-quarter acres, horse property, and they're very valuable as homesites. And when the properties were purchased, they were homesites. They knew this well ahead of time, that they were homesites, and now a change wants to be made. And against those changes on those grounds, not so much that of what they propose to do, but where. And that is basically in a nutshell in the opposition to it, that the community should stay as it is. With that being said, if the council decides that this isn't the best interest of their proposal, then there's some consideration that some neighbors would want, meaning myself, the next-door neighbor, Dr., Mr. Baldwin, and across the street, Mr. Arleno. The person on the email is me, that he was referencing. So the request, as he laid out, actually, his whole statement was very factual, in what the neighbors had to say and their point of view. It's more the fact that this is built for homes, should be for homes. That's basically their bottom line. Just to go over a little bit more of what Mr. Plank said, is that, we are the three neighbors here, I'm speaking for Dave and Felix, us three right here, and we propose that this stays sidewalk, just as this stays sidewalk, 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 and then right roughly here, we go back into a trailer path. It's very simple. I don't see what this gentleman said about why it should be sidewalk, because in my opinion, it's still technically equestrian estates, it's still technically residential, the use. So I think that those guidelines should be the same as the residences, not as the business. So therefore, I think the path would be, it would fit. It would be a transition from the curb and business to the homes. So request that that, you know, be put into a, whatever the term is. The next thing that he mentioned was a plaque, you know, roughly, you know, halfway through their fence line. One of these exists at the Palomino entrance, I'm sure you're familiar with it. The city, I think, gave a partial grant for it a number of years ago.
Yes.
And if we could do that, that would be fantastic. The neighborhood would appreciate it. It would be an entry point visually, that you're going into a residential community, and that along with the sign that we talked about. So the general thinking is that if a person's leaving, they see, you know, right turn only, and they look left, they see a stone, they're not going to go through the neighborhood. So in closing, I don't support the project personally, but I understand that as a whole community, there might be a different view, and that's your, that's your job, I guess, to
Thank you.
to decide for the community, so.
Very nicely stated. Could I ask you what year, can you put those properties back up, the three? Because having been in town a long time, what year, your property is the bottom right one?
I'm right here.
Okay, and what year did you purchase that?
Three years ago.
Three years ago. How about the property to your south?
To my south?
Yes.
That property was purchased two and a half years ago.
I was going to say two years ago.
By Dr. Shaw.
Yeah. And then the property to the south of that?
The property to the south is Mr. Baldwin, he's been there 22 years.
Okay, but he's further north. How about this bottom?
Well, I mean, he is, but he looks right at it, I mean.
Okay.
Felix, I'm not sure, I think it's 16 years?
Yeah, okay, just a point of reference. And down here on the corner, of course, is commercial right now, correct? So you're at the top, and other gentlemen's here in the middle, don't, a couple of years. And what year did the property transition? What year did you all buy?
We purchased the three different parcels across the last 10 years, starting with the front parcel, the commercial parcel, and the two behind it following that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we appreciate your coming down and your rational approach. Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any questions before I turn it over to Councilman Knutson? Okay, please, Councilman Knutson.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Anderson, I have your letter and those drawings, and so I would like to follow up with you after this meeting, if appropriate. Mr. Steinberg, I have several questions for you, if we can jump into it. First, I want to reiterate that the comment around, there's no consensus. I live in the neighborhood directly across, I drive past this property several times a day, and it's very true, there's no consensus about what everybody wants that community to look like. Equestrian Straits, McNills, the Scotch 80s, everybody has very different opinions around how the community's going to respond to the significant growth that we're seeing because of the medical district. So I just want to reiterate, there is no consensus. It's very difficult, being a representative, to figure out how best to meet the needs of every single person. And so the very rational discussion around how we can compromise, I very much appreciate that, and the time and energy that you put in, Mr. Anderson, I really appreciate that. Can we, for a second, how long has this land been vacant? Because I moved into the neighborhood 11 years ago, and it's always been vacant, as long as I've been there.
At one point, there was a small residential dwelling on the back far north parcel. That was a number of years ago. Since then, it's been vacant, and the front parcel, the commercial parcel, has been vacant to my knowledge for perpetuity.
Do you mind talking about some of the other ideas you've had for that property, and how you finally got to a memory care center?
We would have loved, at one point, to put a higher-density medical office building there, two stories. There's a overlay that prevents us from going vertical above 21, 22 feet within this corridor, so that was out of the question. We've been approached by small grocers, natural grocers, like similar grocers to that, that would generate much more traffic in this neighborhood, additionally be a larger nuisance with delivery of food. We've been approached by fast-food users on the hard corner. We've been approached by gas stations on the hard corner. We really believe that this is the best use of the property, because it does cause the least disruption for the residential neighborhood behind it.
As a property owner, and this is your land, how did you end up coming to a memory care center? Why is it that?
There's only 700 licensed memory care beds within Las Vegas today. There currently is a little over 10,000 people that need memory care within the Las Vegas Valley. There's a huge deficit of licensed beds that exist, and this is a use that is supportive with my family's business, healthcare. We've been in healthcare in Nevada for over 50 years, and we'd like to continue being in healthcare in Nevada for the next 50 years, and this is a new business model that we look to roll out, and this would be our first facility within Nevada.
And Mr. Steinberg, one of the things, coming into this position, that I learned is there's a significant need for higher-end employment in the ward. Can you talk a little bit about the employee base, average wage? How many employees do you think will be in there?
At this facility, we'll be employing 54 individuals. The average wage is $20 an hour. That ranges from $13 an hour with our housekeeping and kitchen staff, up to upwards of $150K a year for executive directors and medical staff.
And Mr. Steinberg, do you mind talking a little bit about the patients? General idea of what the patient's condition will be?
We'll have two different levels of memory care and dementia treatment here, level one and level two. Level one, I should go on before I go into the different levels, this is a lockdown facility. Our residents are locked within the facility for their safety. Two different levels are level one and level two. Level one is a resident that needs a lower intensity of care. They're still able to feed themselves, take care of themselves, bathe themselves, but they do need to be washed 24 hours a day and need to be locked within a facility. Then level two, which is a smaller portion of our facility, are for individuals that are at the end-of-life care, prior to hospice, that have trouble feeding themselves, have trouble bathing themselves, showering on their own.
In the presentation that Mr. Anderson mentioned, in the email, I think, exchanged between the two parties, there was a request for signage in the front for equestrian straits, and there's also a request for a no right turn out of the Shetland Drive driveway. Is that, are those comfortable for you?
Those are changes we'd accommodate.
Okay. The third request, although I'm not sure I understand the planning expectations yet, on making the front end more concrete, the back end more equestrian, if we were to work on that after this process, are you comfortable working on that with us?
As long as it didn't delay the proceedings here today.
Okay. Mr. Summerfield, can you help me? For each one of these, I would like to make a recommendation for approval with the conditions that I just talked about, and then work with your team afterwards on working with the residents on that back end equestrian states, if that's comfortable for you as well.
So, Madam Mayor, through you, councilmen, so I've just looked over to my partner from Public Works. It appears that there is no concern about the right only onto Shetland from the property, so that would be something we can do as a part of your motion. That would be a part of your motion on the site development review, for there to be a condition that the exit onto Shetland be marked as right only, so that people are turning right onto Shetland towards Charleston. That would also be the place, if you wished for the applicant to place a monument sign, we will, of course, need to review that, just to make sure that it's not encroaching on any of our sign code issues, but yes, you could also put that on the site development review as well. So that would be the place for those two conditions. And then verbally, if you wanted the applicant to continue to work through the request to look at making a potential variance request for the portion of their street improvements that they're required to do, that would be something that you could just verbally direct them to continue to work with your office and staff to move forward with that request.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. Mayor, through you with the conversation today on...
We'll take them, the councilmen, if we could, we'd take them one at a time, then. We'll start with 65.
Yes, on item number 65, I would motion for approval.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 65. Please vote and please post. And on 66?
Madam Mayor, a motion for approval on item number 66.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve agenda item 66. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. Agenda item 67?
Madam Mayor, item 67, motion for approval.
Motion to approve on agenda item 67. Please vote and please post. And then on 68, I gather, it's subject to all those conditions you listed.
Yeah, and I want to try and repeat them, so I can get it in my head. So item number 60, I'd have motion for approval, with the conditions of the exit on Shetland being a right turn only, and given the condition with the planning department's approval of this equestrian sign on the corner of Shetland and Charleston. And then verbally, with Mr. Steinberg's request, work with him and staff on making the front end more concrete, the back end more equestrian. With that, I'd motion for approval.
And to which you agree to all those conditions that Councilman Knutson just stated?
Yes, we agree to all those conditions.
And Madam Mayor, if we may, so I believe Mr. Anderson wants to do a modification to condition 12, and then I would like to read a condition for the sign that just encapsulates some revised plans and what have you, but I'll let Mr. Anderson go first, if that's okay.
Hi, Bart Anderson, Public Works. Condition 12 currently is the condition that requires them to construct all incomplete half-street improvements on Shetland. I would like to append to that condition, the direction that left turns shall be, or the exit onto Shetland Road shall be signed, right turn only, no left turn, and that, another sentence stating that the requirements of this condition may be modified if a variance for street improvements is approved subsequently.
Thank you for saying it more clearly, yes, I agree.
I will write that down, yes.
Thank you.
And then, Madam Mayor, my planner-y's version of the councilman's request on the sign will be that the applicant, prior to issuance of building permits, applicant shall submit revised site plan and landscape plan to reflect placement of monument sign commemorating equestrian estates, I believe is what it's called, if that works, councilman.
Would you state it orally, please?
That is correct. The monument sign that says equestrian estates will be written into our site plan.
Okay, thank you. And could you, Mr. Summerfield, because obviously with their request, Councilman Knutson asking for a yea or nay today, so they don't spend more time, what is the estimated length of process to go with the conditions, from your viewpoint?
So, Madam Mayor, so the revised site plan, landscape plan for the monument sign, and the note about the no left turn, that should be something that their architect should be able to put forth relatively quickly. The variance process, though, is going to be a minimum of 90 days to 100 days, so I don't know how close they are to being ready to submit a permit packet on this entitlement process. So depending on how close they are in that, I don't believe, because of the permit review process and the civil review process, I believe that they have time to accommodate a variance. It'll just be up to the applicant on, if they're ready to go now, then they'll need to start that process now. If they believe they still have some time before they're going to be submitting for their permit reviews and what have you, then they may have a little bit more time to submit for that variance application for those street improvements.
Is there any speed assessment that we offer at the city, if they could, would, or want to move forward faster?
Unfortunately, Madam Mayor, the public process does not have an expedited process. However, that type of variance would be something that I believe can be final action at Planning Commission, so depending on the councilman's review, once that gets to his desk, once we have an actual application, that may be able to be final action at Planning Commission, which could shorten the time period by about 45 days.
And is that something that the council, this year, council today, may approve, that if in fact it is what Councilman Knutson wants, and they agree with that?
So you can approve it today, because unfortunately, that item
You can or cannot?
You cannot, because that item is not before you. It does require a public hearing, so that item on itself will have to be heard on its merits for that deviation from your street standards, and so you can't actually take action on that today, or technically set an opinion concerning that today, because that's not before you.
Okay. So it looks like I already voted your motion. Did you do the last one, 68?
Mm-hmm.
You did, subject to those conditions.
Correct.
Okay, so we're just waiting on Councilman Diaz, hers to clear. There it is. And that motion carries. Good luck. So you heard the timeline, and that's the next step.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, Mr. Anderson, if it's okay with you, I'll reach out to you this afternoon and see if we can set up some time to think through what you would like that area to look like, and then I'll meet with Steinberg, Mr. Steinberg, and then start working with the planning department, if you're comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Okay, we're agenda, it is quarter of 12, just for those of you with rumbling stomachs, so we can keep going. Agenda items 72 through 75. 72, GPA 772, pardon?
72 through 71.
Oh, how did I skip over 69? Little tiny one in there, there it is. Okay. 69 through 71, okay, thank you. GPA 77257, our request for a general plan amendment from L-low-density residential to M-medium-density residential, number 70ZON77258, a request for rezoning from R1, single-family residential, R3, medium-density residential, number 71, SDR77259, our request for site development plan review for a proposed three-story, 34-unit multifamily residential development. The applicant is International Asset Managers, Inc. The owner is Corey LLC, on 2 acres, 2.00 acres, southwest corner of Upland Boulevard, Corey Place, R1, single-family residential zone, proposed R3, medium-density residential. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on all items. These are Ward 1 with Councilman Knutson. A public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, good morning, Liz Delk, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is with me today. I am filling in for Mr. Gronauer. He sends his apologies, he's stuck at BCC this morning.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning would match the adjacent properties to the west, and staff supports these requests. Additionally, the proposed multifamily residential expansion development adheres to the majority of Title 19 requirements, and staff is recommending approval of that site development review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to make some comments, or shall I go ahead with the public comment first?
Just quickly, I'll just go over the project, if I may, thank you. So as you know, the project is 2 acres on the corner of Corey and Upland. We are requesting a zone change from R1 to R3. Directly to the west of us is Directly to the west of us is the existing Tiffany apartment complex. The project here before you today would be an expansion of that project. We're requesting to do an additional 2 buildings and 34 units. I believe there is a typo on the agenda, it states that it's a three-story building, and we are only 2 stories.
Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. We also have added the 2 rows of trees along Upland, per the request of Planning Commission, and we are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so please, if anyone from the public has any comments on Agenda Item 69, 70, or 71. I will close public hearing, then. Any questions from council? Turning it over to you, Mr. Knutson, Councilman Knutson.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for the very brief presentation. In my office, this has been somewhat of a contentious item for several months prior to me coming into the ward, but I am very comforted to know now that we don't see a whole lot of opposition, and the applicant has done a really good job of reaching out to the neighbors and making sure that what is developed is consistent with the expectations of the neighborhood. So, thank you for the presentation, I think it's a very good addition to the ward, and with that, I would motion for approval on item number 69.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 69. Please vote and please post. Please post.
He's not popping up, I'm sorry. Is that true?
And please post. And that motion carries. Let's go to 70, please.
Madam Mayor, item 70, a motion for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 70. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. And finally, on 71, please, Councilman.
And Madam Mayor, item number 71, a motion for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 71. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. How long a break do we need on Agenda Item 44? Are we okay, or what?
I believe Council...
Mayor, with regard to item number 44, the Clerk's office just needed a clarification that the motion was to approve the complaint, set the date for the hearing, and that'd be a time certain for 11 o'clock. So is that just a clarification for the record?
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so we're okay to go on?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're moving along with Agenda Item 72 through 75. GPA 77278, a request for a general plan amendment from M-medium-low-density residential to M-medium-density residential, number 73ZON 77279, a request for rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R3, medium-density residential, number 74VAR 77424, a request for variance to allow 38 parking spaces where 40 are required for proposed multifamily residential development. And Agenda Item 75, SDR 77280, a request for a site development plan review for proposed 28-unit multifamily development with a waiver of landscape buffer requirements. The applicant is Charlie Conkobe, and the owner is Square Trades Holdings LLC, on 1.20 acres, southeast corner of Sandhill Road and Spino Avenue, RE Residence Estates Zone, proposed R3, medium-density residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval on all items. Staff recommends approval on 72, 73, and denial on 74 and 75. These are in Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz, and are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Mayor Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I promised to be brief today, because I know we're all hungry, so I won't talk too long. So this is an infield piece, I've had this exhibit, just to show you guys, this is the property that we're talking about. This is the property right next door. I wanted to point out that, when I show you the site plan, we're going to have more landscaping along here, along Sandhill, on our property than is shown here. Just to address a couple issues, we're only 2 parking spaces short, and then related to the landscaping, we're literally just a few, I mean, a couple bushes short on the landscaping, and that was because of the one corner of the property, which I can show you on the site plan. So this corner right here is where we're short a little, just a little bit on landscaping. I think we're still in 90 percentile on landscaping. Other than that, we did hold a neighborhood meeting, as required, with the GPA. One person did attend the neighborhood meeting. Her only concern was that, once the project was completed, that we put a sign on the property with the property management's information, since she lives in the area, and if there's a problem, she could call the property managers to get over there and handle it right away. And other than that, we just ask that you follow staff's recommendations for approval, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Let's go over to Mr. Summerfield on the nos and the yeses.
Madam Mayor, so the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning would allow residential densities that are comparable with other multifamily residential development that is surrounding and adjacent to the subject site. Staff therefore recommends that you approve the general plan and rezoning. However, staff finds no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the applicant's parking variance request, and as a result of that parking variance request, must recommend denial of the remaining application. As the applicant representative did mention, they are complying with the number of trees, their deviations for landscape, or because they are short a little bit on the width in that area on the western property line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak to Agenda Items 72 through 75? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll close public hearing, and Councilwoman Diaz, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also want to clarify, I think, for the community, these, they're apartments, correct?
Yes, yes.
These apartments are going to go on the market at market rate, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because I received some opposition or hesitancy about it, but I think that their gleaning of what you're trying to build wasn't what they're thinking is going to pan out, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear for them. I appreciate Mr. Conkobe coming in the early stages of planning for this development. I think that giving my constituents options, hopefully these are nice, high-end apartment living opportunities for residents that like the area but want something newer, and when something's new, it feels good to come in and rent something that might be more energy-efficient and more, especially when it comes to power and the AC in the summer times, something that's newer, up to, you know, speed, it's going to cost less down the road. So I see it as a value-added. There's about 28 units, is that what it is? And I think that just missing the parking by 2 spaces, it shouldn't be overly onerous on the residents, and currently, what that vacant land is breeding is a lot of couch dumping and furniture dumping, and I just completely see this as an upgrade, and I do want to reemphasize anything we can do to make this beautiful surrounding in terms of landscaping, I just please beg that we make our neighborhood look really spiffy and nice. And other than that, I'm ready to move for approval, Madam Mayor.
Please.
So, item number 72, I move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 72. Please vote and please post.
Madam Mayor, you don't mind if I just make a quick comment?
Please.
And, Councilwoman Diaz, I'm going to support you in your motion, but as a body, we should continue to look at seeking out our development partners who are bringing in, especially in areas, especially in Ward 5 and Ward 3, of finding some set-asides for affordable housing. At least, you know, even if you don't do 30% AMI, 60% AMI, and then we need to discuss as a body about the importance of impact fees for our developers that will, as we grant zoning rights and entitlement rights, that the developers will work to bring other impoverished areas up, in addition to these entitlements that we're giving them. So even if we had, if it was 28 units and we set aside a 5% of the units at 60% AMI, we would still be able to provide our residents some type of affordable housing aspect of it, because we know that's a big issue. And as we continue to keep building, rents are going to continue to rise, and I've seen it in my travels around the country where they have, and I mean, most developers are willing, because they realize it's an issue as well, and it also allows people in the community to stay within the community, instead of having them pushing them out.
Thank you. Okay, so please post. You can do it orally.
Yes.
Okay, and the motion carries. Let's move on to 73, please.
I move to approve Item 73.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 73. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries as well. 74, please.
I move to approve Item Number 74. And Mr. Summerfield, there's no conditions, correct?
No, ma'am, there's no conditions.
Okay.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote and please post. And that motion carries, and finally, 75.
And I move to approve Item Number 75.
And there is also a motion to approve Number 75. Please vote and please post. Well done, congratulations.
Thank you.
Move forward, thank you. Now we'll move on to 76 and 77. VAR 77419, a request for variance to allow termination of a public alleyway in a den-end stub where cul-de-sacs required. Number 77, VAC 77293, a request for a petition to vacate a portion of a 20-foot-wide public right-of-way alleyway. The applicant is Mike Ganti, and the owner is City of Las Vegas, a portion of a 20-foot-wide public right-of-way alleyway, segment bound by Fremont Street, Carson Avenue, 13th and 14th Streets. The Planning Commission and staff recommend denial on both items. These are in Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz, and are public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff Catalowick, architect, at 353 East Bonneville, Suite 171, representing the owner, Mike Ganti.
Good morning, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Mike Ganti, 1266 Ben Ali Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89119.
Thank you for all that you do, and especially our veterans. Okay, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the proposed vacation would create a public right-of-way terminus that would end with no cul-de-sac or alternative access through this alleyway. Staff finds that there's no unique hardship to support a variance request, and therefore is recommending denial of both applications. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to make comment on these items? And would you care to make some comments about the need here?
Yes, so I've been working with Mike for the past few months to convert this old motel apartment into a restaurant. Those plans have since been approved by the Building Department. The issue here is the, and this has actually just been brought to my attention, that there was a vacation application, VAC 4296, from October 1696, that this alleyway had become part of the private property. Because these 2 parcels that actually connect, I don't know if you can see here, this is the front on Fremont, where we've converted to a restaurant, these being small, single units, and the property to the rear. We're looking at vacating this alleyway, which is actually pretty narrow anyway, it doesn't look like there were trucks that were able to make this turn. There used to be a fence terminating here anyway, so...
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on these 2 items? I'm not sure if I closed public comment, going to do so right now, and we're going to turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it has been brought to my attention by my staff that there was an attempt to vacate this alley, or has been vacated since 1996, just not formally vacated, and I just wanted you to speak to, where were we in '96? Why are we back here in 2019? And why you're seeking us to vacate this alley?
Well, if you take, what we are talking about is a portion of the alleyway that runs, dissects, literally dissects my property, such that I own both sides, and we have 20-foot section that goes right through it. And we worked with Councilman Reese's office back in 1996, and that portion of the alleyway was vacated. We had a fence over here, and the fence clearly stated that the vacation order number, et cetera, and this portion was closed since 1996, all the way to 2019. Sometime in the month of January, when we went in to, for, to the planning, for the purpose of reopening the asset, we were told that apparently there were some irregularities with the way the vacation was recorded. So they suggested that we come back in front of you to clear that out. But what I would like to say is, we had a total control over the security and everything when it was closed, but soon as we opened up the fence, we have people coming from all directions, and it's just absolutely impossible to operate that property right now. So there is a significant amount of hardship associated with the fact that now, our side door is open, the back door is open, the front, and when there, there is traffic sometimes at late hours, and they come in and they turn real fast, hit the cars that are parked on my property, and at one time, they even ran into our building. Of course, the damage was small, and so, the alleyway is simply useless for vehicular traffic. It's just too small. Republic Services backs out anyway.
Okay, so there's really no connectivity throughout that alleyway, and I have heard that it's too narrow to create a cul-de-sac by which then Republic Services would be able to turn around. So if it's coming in and backing out anyways right now? And so you have been maintaining this alley since '96, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, now it would just be formalizing what you've been doing. So I don't know if any of my colleagues have any questions?
Nope, they look good.
All right. Well, with that, I'll move to approve Item Number 76.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 76. Please vote, please post. Motion carries, and Agenda Item 77?
We'll move to approve Agenda Item 77 as well.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 77. Please vote and please post.
Thank you so much.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz, Mayor and the rest of council, thank you.
Thank you. Of course, we have already done 78 to 79, so what we're going to do, we'll take 80, 81, and 82, and then we will take a recess before our reports and presentation. So, number 80 is SUP 77277, public hearing, applicant Ramon Guerrero, owner NFC LLC, possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed 7331 square-foot restaurant with alcohol use at 2400 West Sahara Avenue C1 Limited Commercial Zone with Councilman Knutson. Both planning and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? No. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the, let me make sure I remember the right one, 80. So the proposed restaurant with alcohol use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing uses within the shopping center and the surrounding area. Staff is recommending approval of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anyone have comment on either of these items? One item, excuse me, 80. Councilman Knutson, I'm going to close public hearing. Yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did try to get ahold of the applicant to make sure he was here today and weren't able to. That being said, someone from my staff was at the grand opening, we feel comfortable that it's a good use, and with the Planning Commission and staff recommending approval, I would also move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 80. Please vote and please post. Motion carries, thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 81, SDR 76888, public hearing, applicant owner Square Trades Holdings LLC, possible action or request for site development plan review for proposed 8-unit multifamily residential development with waivers to the... residential development with waivers to the downtown Las Vegas. Appendix F parking and landscaping requirements on .16 acres at 638 North 9th Street, R3, medium-density residential zone, Ward Three. Councilwoman Diaz. Oh, you've been sleeping here. You're back.
I'm back.
Go.
Mayor, Councilmember Nathan Taylor, 8414, West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I will be brief, because I know we're all hungry still. Couple of things I'd like to point out. I want to first thank Councilwoman Diaz and her staff for working with us on this. It was kind of a, a unique infill project. I also wanted to recognize Planning Commissioner DeSalvio and Planning Commissioner Schlotman. When we had first submitted this project to the city, we had a really large footprint, and it prohibited us from putting in the required landscaping. So with the suggestion of those two planning commissioners, we went back to the drawing board, and we reduced the size of the footprint so we could get close to about 75% of what landscaping is required in the area, and that's pretty much where we got to. We actually reduced the footprint by about 5,600 square feet, so we took the units that were a little over 1,000 square feet, and we knocked them down to about 700 square feet, approximately around there. We're excited about this project. It's, it's, it's on a lot that, as the councilman probably knows, there was a building there at one time, I believe. It may have, she may know better than I do, but I think it had burned down. There was some vandalism and some stuff going on, on the property that, that shouldn't be. So with that, and thanking all those folks, I just request that you follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, due to the proposed parking and landscape buffer waiver, staff finds that the proposed development is overbuilt and not appropriate to the subject site as submitted. Staff would acknowledge, as the applicant's representative just indicated, based on the recommendations of Planning Commission, they have substantially reduced the building footprint. They have improved the landscaping. It's still deficient, but they have improved the landscaping. They have additionally improved the facade treatments on this building as a part of those revisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make comment on Agenda Item 81? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to go ahead and ask the council to follow Planning Commission's recommendation to approve item number 81.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve Agenda Item 81. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
To you too. And on to Agenda Item 82. SDR 77286, public hearing, applicant Bell Investment Group, owner Cornerstone Company. For possible action and appeal of the denial by the Planning Commission, request for site development plan review for proposed 34-story mixed-use development consisting of 29,974 square feet of commercial office space and 513 multifamily residential units with waivers of downtown Las Vegas overlay architectural standards on .46 acres at 1211 South 3rd Street. See one limited commercial zone, Ward Three. Councilwoman Diaz. Planning Commission and staff recommend denial. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
And you are?
Good evening, or, whoa, I think I've been here too long today. Good morning, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980, Festival Plaza Drive, here today representing the applicant. Would you like me to go first?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So, here today representing the applicant, we are here on an appeal of an item that was denied at Planning Commission. That was not necessarily for the reasons it may come across if you just read the Agenda Item. Due to some timing issues, we were required to have the Planning Commission consider the application as it was submitted. However, we knew we were going to be making changes, and we have subsequently made those changes in between the Planning Commission hearing and the City Council hearing today. So the project that I'm going to present to you today with these changes was, although verbally represented that we would do it at the Planning Commission, they didn't have that technically in front of them. Since the time of the Planning Commission, we have done some changes, but the main thing that we've done is add more parking to this project and lost some units. Looking on this overhead, just to orient you where the property is, it is this vacant piece of property right where Third and Fourth kind of come to a point, and this is Colorado Avenue. There's a small city of Las Vegas Park, and then we sit right to the north of that. Farther north of there would be Charleston Boulevard. The project that we are proposing is for a concept called micro-units. The developer is a real developer and a company out of, based out of Germany. They've done projects all over the world, in Barcelona, in Berlin, and as I'm talking about this, in Miami. This gives you an idea, the client is Bell Invest, or the developer is Bell Invest, of their projects that they've done around the world and with this concept of micro-units. They think that this is the perfect location. It's kind of the midpoint in between downtown Las Vegas and the strip area for this type of project. Your staff, and we respect them greatly, has expressed some concerns over the ratio of parking. There were some other concerns in terms of the design of the building, but I would say that that was the main concern. So after the Planning Commission meeting and what's before you today is a project where we've made the following changes. We have reduced the overall height of the building from 400 feet to 384 feet. We've removed 26,000 square feet of office space. We've reduced the number of units from 513 units to 433 units, and we've increased the number of parking spaces to 420. So one of the main concerns was making sure that we had adequate parking for our units and our residents. We have 433 residential units, and we have 420 parking spaces. So we're about at 97% parking for the residential. Now, we do have a small component left of 3,900 square feet of commercial. So although we removed the office, we kept a small portion of the ground-level commercial, 3,900 square feet. We believe, and the developer of this project is very passionate about the parking ratios, and in their opinion, they actually think for, for the market that they're trying to attract, we're actually providing more parking than is necessary, but we know it's a sensitive subject for the city and sensitive to the other businesses that are around there, which includes coffee shops, and Esther's Kitchen is near there, and the new wine bar, and other restaurants that have come in. So we understand that there's, you know, a fine balance that we have to strike. We think we've struck it with the revised plans that we have provided to you. You know, when you look at this area, there's a lot of vacant property, and then you have ours, and, you know, a development like this with a real developer who's built these projects, both in Europe and now coming over to the United States, we think is great for not only the area, but also for those businesses that I just referenced, and even new businesses that are coming in. Also, for what it's worth, and I think this might give you some, some further comfort on the parking, I recently represented a project that is located closer to Charleston in this area. It was also a mid-rise mixed-use project, and in that particular case, staff did recommend approval. We were providing sufficient parking. So it isn't like every project that's coming in in this immediate area is underparked. Again, this one has just a unique concept with it being those micro-units. They believe the parking with the revised plan meets what their residents will need and then some. And we also think that this project is a great boom for an area that is now just starting to see more and more cool things happen in it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, so since this is an appeal, the, the original project as mentioned was, while it was meeting some of the intent of the downtown master plan and specifically the 18B Las Vegas Arts District, it was, the project as originally proposed was significantly overbuilt, given what they've done. Since the Planning Commission decision and the submission of this appeal, as the representative did indicate, they have submitted revised plans. Planning has looked at those. In addition to what the representative talked about, they have improved some of those architectural design standards that were deficient in the original submittal by enhancing the entrances with some trellises and some canopies, and doing some additional architectural work with some cornices and what have you on the building. We do find that the parking ratio is much more in line with what staff has been supporting in this area, in other developments on these revised plans. We do have an adjustment, so if council is amenable to this revised application, we do have some condition changes. Specifically, we would delete Condition 3, and then we would make an amendment to Condition 2 to reflect the most up-to-date plans that we have received and reviewed from the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Agenda Item 82? I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll turn this over to you, Councilwoman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Ms. Lazovich, just so the council is informed, because they didn't have necessarily the opportunity to speak to the folks who want to bring this product to the Arts District, can you explain, because you speak to residents, right? And for some folks, when you think residents, you're thinking they're going to be living there, you know, a full year or many years. What's the concept of residency in this project?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. So the concept with, for this developer, again, it's called Bell Village, their concept is that they would provide, it's a multifamily project for rent. They would not do any type of short-term rentals. However, their shortest might be six months. They believe very strongly that these micro-units, while smaller on the inside of the unit, and it still provides the kitchen and the bedroom and the living space, they really, really put a lot of emphasis on the amenities that are provided within the whole building. Multiple levels of the residential building have multiple different kinds of amenities. Their idea is that you, they want to create a social environment within their project where people come out of their units, and they go into the theater room, or the movie room, or the gym, or there's event kitchens where they'll do, they'll bring in a chef of some kind and do community events there. There's a library, there's co-working spaces. They really put a substantial emphasis on those amenities. So it's not just a building with a lot of small units. That's a different kind of project. For them, it's about the amenities and how you get people out of their units to start talking, and they believe that there's a market for this, certainly with the younger generation that likes to live in that way. And they've proved it in Europe and also in Miami.
Okay. I'm glad, I was going to say what other US city they were building, and thank you for emphasizing it's in Miami, Florida. I'm excited that this project is a possibility in Ward Three, especially as you stated, it would be very close in proximity to many newly opened businesses in the Arts District, and I think they could benefit from the foot traffic that this space would bring with folks coming to it, working there, and wanting to grab a bite to eat, or maybe a glass of wine, or, you know, anything else that they might be needing. And it might spur further growth in that area, which is much needed. So I am going to, if there's any, no more questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, one, this is similar, we were in Chicago, it's a company called Cedar Street that has a product called, they call them flats, somewhat similar to the concept that your client is presenting to us. And it does work, very much, especially in the downtown corridor. They have created a sort of an inter-networking of their flats properties where all of their residents, there are multiple types that have the ability to utilize their services and amenities for each one of those properties. So, and if you're staying here, you're able to go down by Cashman Field, or you're able to go up to Summerlin, wherever they may be, and so it's an interesting concept. I'll just reiterate again, here's another development that is coming into our corridor that we should be working with the developer to talk about impact fees that will allow us to find other ways to develop other underserved communities, and also about the affordable housing aspect of it. Even if there was a 30%, 60%, 80% AMI, then that would help with the shortage of affordable housing. And we continue to see rents rise, and we continue to see our community are being pushed out. And so we need to, as a city, need to, I think, need to have a, a sound policy of at least working with developers to provide some type of affordable housing in these units that are coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to add, and especially to staff, this is very generational. It's a movement that's going on around the world, definitely around this country. What I see is generations change, that we best be prepared to put into some type of processing, that these will not turn into short-term rentals. Because if you don't fill them up and you don't rent them out on a regular, I mean, we've been down the road on short-term rentals. So when they're not filling up, as the clientele of the millennials and everybody gets older, and we've watched through 30, 40 years, not all of us, because some of us aren't that old, but you watch this, everybody rushes to the forum, bills, and now these are minis, and we've seen them up in Seattle, that the minis are a great trend today, and then what comes when they're not finding out they're renting them for a long enough period of time. So it's just something to put in, in the minds of planning and how we go forward with licensing as you move forward, and that's enough for me.
And Madam Mayor, through you, if I may, to the motion maker, I just would, in your motion, if you could include the deletion of Condition 3 and the amendment of Condition 2 to amend the date stamp to be 10/22/19. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm hopeful it won't, they all stay true to their vision and their product that they've had work in Germany and in Miami so far, and, you know, we don't want to see it come to what the mayor has described. And to my colleague, Councilwoman Creer's point, I think we, as a city, do have to have the broader conversation about affordable housing and how we're going to get there together. I don't think it's a one- or two- or three-ward issue. I uniquely think it is a city issue, and I, I am more than open to continue to have that conversation about how we figure it out, and how we put it together, and how we get there. So, but I'm going to go ahead and make my motion to approve Item 82 on the agenda with the deletion of Condition 3 and amending Condition 2 to include the most recent date stamp of 10/22/19.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a motion on Agenda Item 82. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good luck to your client. And I would like to ask, at this point, we are going to take a recess for, it's almost 12:30. We'll take a half-hour recess. What I'd like to ask our attorney, our counsel, really to take a look at as we move forward with more and more of these smaller units, that we be able to put into all agreements that there's a guarantee they will not go to short-term rentals.
Okay, ma'am, we'll take a look at it. Thank you.
And if you could bring that back to us as a body.
Okay, will do.
Because Christmas future. Okay. We will stand in recess until 1 o'clock. Thank you all very much.